Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 23th Board of Education meeting. A regularly scheduled meeting that is being held remotely. Again, we're sorry that we're in this situation, but this is the safest way for us all to get together. And so we had to keep this as a remote meeting today. I'm going to start with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I always feel like I'm going to be like said, I forgot who the singer was, who was supposed to sing the National Anthem and forgot some words. There won't be a hearing and privilege of the floor tonight because this is a remote session. But we do highly encourage you to send an email into the school. You could address it to each of the board members, or you could address it to the administration, and they will forward it to the board members. If you have a question or a comment that you would like to make, again, I'm sorry that we're unable to hear from you today, but hopefully this will be going away at some point soon. Next on our agenda are our superintendent's comments, so I'll turn it over to Susan.
Thank you, Dave. So I'd like to update the board about a couple of things this evening. As you might be aware, the New York State Athletic Public High School Athletic Association has made their recommendations for winter sports offerings. And they are suggesting only low or moderate-risk sports, including bowling, gymnastics, indoor track and field, skiing, both Nordic and Alpine, and boys swimming and diving. In a discussion that we had across the foothills superintendent this past week, we all agreed that indoor track and field really isn't possible because no one has any place to run. So the league, and this is true in several of the surrounding leagues, suburban council, I believe also. But track and field, even though it's low to moderate impact, you can't run inside. There aren't menus to run inside. Of those other sports I mentioned, Scotia Glenville only has teams in two areas. One is bowling and the other is Nordic skiing. So we will participate in Nordic skiing and bowling. And again, not those other sports, not because we choose not to, but because we don't field teams in them. And they're looking at the start of that sports season to be December 14th. At this point, the high-risk sports of basketball, cheerleading, ice hockey, boys' winter volleyball, and wrestling are all still considered too risky, too much contact to play. So we're waiting to hear both from the governor's office, but also from the New York State Athletic Association. I also, and certainly when I'm done here, I'll take questions if any of the board members have questions. I also want to update you a bit about our COVID situations. I know there have been some questions about why does Susan close some schools to teachers and students, but other schools she makes the teachers come in, even if the students can't. And a good example today of those things happening was both Glen Warden and the high school were closed. No teachers, no kids. In Glen Warden, I'm sorry, Glen Warden was closed. In Glen Warden's case, we would not have had enough staff to safely have students in the building because there are so many people who are excluded at this point as part of the investigation, the Schenectady County Public Health Service investigation, which was still ongoing. This afternoon, I was able to say we will open Glen Warden tomorrow because for those children and staff who are still excluded or have been placed on quarantine at this point by SCPHS, we have managed to put together coverage for the school for the day, so they will be open. The high school, as you know, we became aware of a case pretty late last evening. And the suggestion from SCPHS was that anyone who had had contact with the positive case should be excluded while SCPHS started their contact tracing today. So that meant an entire cohort of students, 238 or so, along with the 88 teachers, the teaching assistants. I had 12-month office staff come in because we were pretty certain the individual had not been in those areas. But we ended up excluding anybody who would have been there today. And because we are not quite geared up to pivot immediately to remote teaching, that also meant neither Strong nor Tartan kids could attend today. By this afternoon, working with Schenectady County and kudos to Tom and Christine and Peter, we've got the number of students who will be excluded. It will be under 20, I'm sure. Right now, it was, when I checked last, eight. And the number of staff who would have to be excluded was looking like potentially four, which also may have changed since I've been with you folks in our earlier session. So you look at that, how wide that net was last night and where it's come to today. And we will be in shape to welcome back Strong tomorrow. And through work that Karen was good enough to take on today, if we have to pivot at the high school again, we will be in better shape to do that. We will be able to do that. And if you're wondering, so what's the holdup? The holdup is we have 700 Chromebooks that were supposed to be to us this summer, which are still not here. And we have teachers who are not prepared to teach at home right now. They don't have devices. So all of those things are factors I have to take into consideration when I'm trying to figure out, do we shut down the school? Can we bring in the staff? If we can bring in staff, we can teach remotely, particularly at secondary. But today, I couldn't bring staff back into the building either. So tomorrow will be a better day all the way around. And then I had let you all know, if you haven't seen your email, that we had a case at Lincoln, a positive test today. But because of the pod effect, the fact that the elementary students are in pods, they are with a very restricted number of other students, they're with those same students pretty consistently. The teachers of those students are fairly consistent. The pod was excluded, is quarantined, will be quarantined, as were the four teachers associated with the program. So that's really what I have to consider when we have a COVID case, is am I going to have enough adults left to open the building safely and deliver the program? How extensive is the contact tracing going to be? And again, that's not our decision. That's Schenectady County Public Health. We take our lead from them. And what really is the possibility of exposure? So again, I don't make those decisions lightly. And we try to consider all of the information we have before we make a choice. Last night, I thought we were pushed, that we had no choice. It was 6:30 when I found out. They don't contact trace on Sunday nights, no surprise. So we knew they'd be coming into this morning with that process really kicking off. So in case you're wondering, if you have questions, that's what it is. It is not as an association member jokingly said to me last week, who I love best. If I love you best, then I tell you, you don't have to come. If you're not on my best love list, then I tell you, you have to come to school. That's not accurate. It really is based on a much more scientific approach than that. So I wanted you to know those two things. I also wanted to talk just momentarily, I'm going to ask Drew to speak, about the questions that Rick, Good Questions, had sent us about, some financial questions, and then also about special education. But one of the finance questions I'm going to ask Drew to address because after I sent my response and Drew and I talked a bit more, we want to make sure we were thorough in our response. So Drew, could I ask you to swap places with me?
So Rick asked the question regarding the tax collection report and some related transactions that we sent. So I'm going to try to answer them again. Rick, jump in if it's not clear. The tax collection report is where we show what we've collected during the tax collection period and what the tax warrant had stated at the point. So it's the difference of what we collected to what still owed us. And the county receives that report from us after tonight, and they make the district whole on whatever the uncollected is. So that was one of the questions Rick had, was that, you know, are we made whole on this? And we are made whole based on the adjusted tax rule. So you've seen some small changes subsequent to when the board approved the warrant before we went out with the tax bills, and that's where there's clerical error, where a star exemption wasn't handled correctly, or a veterans exemption, and the assessor then corrects that and adjusts somebody's tax bill. They're usually very small in nature. And that's how the percent collected is related to, is the adjusted warrant. The second question Rick asked, when it's a prior period. So you'll see tonight that we're asking you to approve a refund of taxes. So the tax period is closed out right now. So anything that happens down the road, we refund that money out of the district's budget. And if you remember, during the budget process and during your appropriation status review, there's a code A1964400. I carry money in that code for that purpose. And so that's what that's for. We then expense that back because the tax rule is closed. The tax collection is closed, so anything subsequent to tonight becomes a refund of a prior period. So Rick, I hope that addresses what you asked me.
Yes, absolutely, Drew. Yeah, that's perfect. I appreciate the follow-up.
So unless you have questions for me, that wraps up my update for you.
Does anyone have a question about the sports or anything? Let's not all jump in at once, but if you do.
Are the risky sports going to be pushed to spring potentially? Like, for instance, basketball?
That is a possibility in that there will be multiple sports offered in the same timeframes. So students who might have at one point competed in both football and basketball, if those sports run at the same time, that could be a bit of a challenge. But at this point, what we know is simply that the high-contact sports are being held back again.
Thank you. You also mentioned you might address, not just Drew's comments to the financial. You said perhaps maybe mentioning something on one of the other questions I had? Is that you're going to keep that for later in the meeting?
Oh, no, Drew and I knew that we wanted to offer a little more information about the financial questions, but unless you have a question about my response in terms of special education, what I sent out to the board today, no, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. No, it was a great response. Thank you, Susan.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Susan, was that it?
Yes, it is, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Next on our agenda is to accept the report of the tax collector. Can I get a motion?
I move the Board of Education to accept the resolution contained in the tax, in the report of the tax collection for 2020, 2021, as submitted.
Kim seconded. Any questions? All in favor? Any abstentions? Any nays?
So we want to make you aware of one other thing in terms of the tax collection report. You folks have to sign them. I mean, you literally have to sign it. And we researched this with our attorneys today, and we are on a bit of a tight timeline. So tomorrow, I'm going to either need you to make an appointment and stop in at district office and sign, or we will get to your home to have you sign it. We'll send it to you with the courier. But I have to get everyone's signature tomorrow. So if you could let me know at the end of the board meeting whether you need courier service or you're going to be able to pop your head in here at some point, that will be very helpful. Got to get your signatures tomorrow.
Who's not at home? Is everyone at home tomorrow?
I cannot guarantee that I'm going to be home tomorrow.
And neither can Hal.
And neither can who?
Hal, I would guess.
I'd have to, due to my staffing issues I have currently. If I could call or text you when I had 40 minutes to run down and back to work, I could do that, if that's okay.
Or Hal would be happy to courier the document to you and have you sign it right there, so you don't have to leave.
Okay. Can I touch base with you in the morning?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Susan, I'm just thinking that if it's, if everyone's going to be home, except Kim can't guarantee that, it may be easier to just have the courier come to our homes. Is anyone against that?
Well, I was just thinking, Dave, I have to go out because I have got to go down to the post office to mail some bills. So I will be right near the district office, and they have sometime in the afternoon to stop in.
Good, okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind going in, just because then I can choose when to do it instead of the courier showing up.
So Rick, what's your preference?
Courier coming to my house tomorrow would be ideal.
Perfect. Okay, David?
Tomorrow's my birthday, so I won't, I can't guarantee I'll be home at all, so I'd like to drive down.
Sounds good. And so we hear from Dan, from Pam, or from Kim.
Dave, I can swing by the office tomorrow. I can call over and send an appointment tomorrow. I just know I'm going to be in and out in between a meeting.
Sounds good. All right. I think, you got it all, Susan?
I think so. Dan, you're going to come by?
I'd like to come by early. I don't know what time you all open.
7:30.
Yeah, I can come by at 7:30 if that's all right.
Absolutely. And then we're going to courier to Rick and Hal, you and me in the morning. What are you doing?
Office meeting, quiet. I will pop in in the afternoon. I'll call up.
All righty, and Pam, you're going to come by, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yep, we're taking them.
Yeah, I just figured, let's get it settled while we're all thinking of it.
Susan, is there a window when I could expect somebody? Wonderful. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Next is to accept an appropriate gift. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion to accept an appropriate gift and donation from the Scotia Glenville Elks dictionaries to Scotia Glenville grade three students, again.
I'll second.
Thank you. Tim, thank you, Rick. Any questions on this? All in favor? Any abstentions? Any nays? Don't move. Thank you. Next is to establish a senior memorial scholarship. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion to establish the Claude Grumoli Senior Memorial Scholarship, as submitted.
Thank you, Rick. Can I get a second? Thank you, Hal. Any questions? All in favor? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Any nays? So moved. Thank you. Next is the withdrawal and amend the school tax rules. I'm not even going to say anything. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion to withdraw and amend the 2018, 2019, and 2020 school tax rules, as stated.
Thank you, Kim. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Hal. All in, any questions around this? All in favor? Any abstentions? Any nays? So moved. Thank you. Next is to approve the resolution. Five years of service with CR BOSIS. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution dated November 23rd, 2020, approving the five-year contract with Albion, Harry, Schenectady, Saratoga Board of Cooperative Educational Services, CR BOSIS, as stated.
Thank you, Kim. Can I get a second? Okay, I think I heard David and Dan at the same time, so.
I heard Dan first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, all, any questions, please?
Yeah, quick, quick question. Just to confirm, this is essentially a routine lease agreement where we're swapping our copiers to upgrade for the new lease, but it also includes the service plan to service the copiers?
BOSIS has been a cooperative bid on this, so we're going into their bid process. So Ken is the recipient, which is the current leaseor. And it does have a service contract. It's a separate co-serve. But yes, it is covered the service of this. It's a five-year lease, replacing the ones that are now obsolete. We turn those back into them. We'll get BOSIS data over the five years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? Any abstentions? Any nays? So moved. Next is communications.
I'll move communications, A and B, staffing one through six, and replacement of students with disabilities.
I'll second.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you, Kim. Any questions on up to 12B, I mean, 12A? All in favor? Any abstentions? Any nays? So moved. In treasures reports. Treasures report for July. Any questions? Any questions for the August report? Any questions for September? Okay, so we go down the warrants. Payroll warrant number 10. Payroll warrant number 11. Payroll warrant number 12. Payroll warrant, payroll warrant number 13. Payroll warrant number 14. I'm going to go through the check warrants. Check warrant A13. Check warrant H7. Check warrant A14. Check warrant H8. Check warrant A16. Check warrant A17. And check warrant H9. Okay. Move those forward. Just a reminder to please destroy or bring to the office when you go, so it can be destroyed, your copy of the placement of children with disabilities. With that, I'm going to ask if there is, well, I'll remind folks that there is no other hearing and privilege of the floor today. And I'm going to ask if there's other business. Okay, I have one quick one. I was asked to speak tomorrow with NISBID. They're pulling five board presidents from across the upstate New York region. And I was picked for our region to share thoughts about COVID and the upcoming budget year. And I'll give a, let folks know, I'll send an email out probably Thursday or Friday about how that went. It seems to be a pretty open, in general, conversation. They, Mike from NISBID said that they're required to do this every so often. And so they're going to do it tomorrow. So I'll let folks know what's said and what we hear, and if anything interesting comes out of it. Other new business, I don't, I don't have anything. Does anyone else have anything they wanted to cover? Okay, with that, I want to thank everybody for participating in tonight's meeting and attending, those of you in Zoomland. And just remind us all that we are probably going to get barraged with phone calls over the weekend. It seems to be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday seem to be the hottest times of the year. But being there's a holiday coming up. You know, as we've all known, and as I've said, we are not the spokespeople for the school. So the response is pretty simple, which is, please contact the administration or your principal, and they'll have more up-to-date information. And especially careful now with, I don't know if folks had read the latest HIPAA violation, but there was $100,000 HIPAA violation for a local hospital giving the name out of a student who was at the hospital being treated for COVID. Not in our area, not even in our state, but. So we just got to be really careful. Other than that, I hope everybody has a great Thanksgiving. We'll be together in December. Hopefully, we'll be together, together. If not, we'll be doing this, but please schedule your time around being available at 6:00 PM. And we'll have an exec session then. And does anyone have a reason to go into exec now? If not, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion to adjourn.
I'm going to say that everyone just said that. Can I get a second?
Everyone.
Everyone, second?
Okay, so we have the Talbets, one and the other. Doesn't matter which order, they both went together, so. Would that all in favor? And I guess before we forget, or before we leave. I'm gonna sing happy birthday to Dave, so everybody please join me. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear David. Happy birthday to you. Hey, Dave. You don't look a day over twenty-nine, my friend, with that beard. Thanks, everybody. Have a great holiday. Those of you who I don't sit between now and that.